I do, we didn't have to do hand signal. Okay Commissioners, your meeting is live.
Morning, welcome to the sixteenth meeting of the United Commission East Stand and the.
I believe it is through the flag of United States of America and through the Republic on which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, good morning Commissioners, Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director, and I just wanted to comment on, you noticed on the agenda I had removed the presentation from M A T C about the um. Regional certification, which had been a discussion about apprenticeships and I did, he is still going to come. They came back with a proposal that was more detailed and had some uh dollar figures in it that we hadn't discussed and so we just. Need to go back and make sure we're on the same page, but it it will still come to you.
Brady was fun, but you got in the community case, talking about some stuff.
Yeah, good, I didn't, I wasn't tracking that, so, yeah. Yeah, I think so, I think that's actually the main reason why.
Uh, for Monday was our employee day, went pretty well. Um, it was wet and I didn't feel nice enough, but it's definitely. Yeah, I didn't see where they had some other stuffs already. Tuesday, uh Tuesday morning was one of those, whoops, that's wrong, it was last week. Well, this one Tuesday evening was firework meeting. And that was, they feel big views in that meeting, that Russell updated him like how closing the drug city fires didn't affect them. You know, actually much worse meetings that had. The Wednesday was communal detention center, uh discussion about the interlocal agreement that we worked on. And they found a sheriff and administrators who there, they had questioned about how funding formula was calculated. It explained what they all that clean about and they seemed to understand about it. And other than the type of the interlocal agreement, probably proved that these, we sent out the advice. Uh verifiings out of counties for approval, we can sign up with the next community. Then they've been getting financials and had a whole bunch of stuff at Amazon, they've been ordering bottomers supplies to the Amazon. They said the prices are good, it has free delivery and they don't have to send somebody out Walmart to the last step and they just. But you know, save some time and. And not worry about making a list, say more one thing at a time and it just stacks up after. Interesting, I asked about that's why Amazon had to open the distribution instead of buy. You were in it too, that's all I've got.
First business commissioner, first time we had the motion on the agreement professional services with Shaw meet and for interim inspection now.
Also, and the moving safer to agree the uh agreement for professional services for the inspections, fall meet all favorites.
You there, John?
I am, but I can barely hear anything.
Okay, they just made a motion on the agreement for professional services.
Yeah, that's fine.
You'll vote for that, okay? Okay, uh here at least uh so the basis.
Commissioner Ford, can you hear me loudly?
I can.
Okay, let me see if I have the wrong microphone selected.
It's something on my end here, I'm not even getting the connection on my Bluetooth, I'm stopped at the moment here.
Okay.
Probably something.
Commissioner Fokie, would you test the microphone there real quick, I wanna see if it registers, well, just talking to it.
Testing, testing, working for it.
Yep, I'm getting a register, so, okay, thank you.
Next commission made motion to approve the extension on contract for powers and prices for other any trash service.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the extension of the contract with how we, how was entirely supported, okay, for darling land and trash services.
One second, the moving second to approve the extension of the contract with towels enterprises or any investor just on favor.
Here please sign. Next mission in motion for private land and property judicial services space need studying in uh.
Why I have this thought episode? So this was, um, did you want, okay.
Um, so John brought this originally and he just had a really rough estimate on what he thought the cost was gonna be, which was the eighty thousand dollars, um and he did not. Have bids back yet when he added it to the C I P, um and so when you guys approved it, we did, um and he mentioned, you know, this is a really rough estimate, I, it could come in way higher and it. It did come in way higher, so, uh so that's why we're amending it and we anticipate the one for the health department may also increase, um so we may be bringing that one back as well, but he just had rough estimates from. The get go, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All second, the move inside would be agree the C I D project amendment for the initial services and space needs study. Out of ninety four thousand double words on the table, there please sign.
Next mission made motion uh for the chair to sign the parting grant award contract.
Just here if you had any questions, um just a super quick update, um the Make My Move folks and the chamber and ourselves have been kind of working. Behind the scenes to get things ready, so as soon as we get the grant contract. Signed and back to the state and then that first disbursement from the fifty percent from the state, we can, we can just get going, so. Um, just if you have any questions on the, the program or anything else, I just wanted to be here, so.
I was kind of wondering about the eight thousand dollars in any kind, yeah, just make that.
That, I mean, that's basically staff time, so that's, that's my time and whoever else is, is being a part of, of the program, a little bit from the chamber, so that's all in kind funds. That's true, yeah, I've been seeing it.
Okay, I would leave a motion um to approve the uh share the side of home or whatever.
All second, for doing second, you have to keep the signing of the home and the part one grant work contract for favor.
Thank you.
Chair Lisa. Next commission made motion on the relative employee action forms, Brandon Floyd, New Meyer, you totally take color works department, Diana. Uh children, New Meyer, the secretary of county attorney department, Lisa Bliss, New Meyer, administrative assistant, county attorney department. Uh Roberts, New Meyer, volunteer firefighter, Kristen Smith, New Meyer, volunteer firefighter. So, Ro, Rosio Lopez, excuse me, New Meyer, best management within the treasury department, and the landlord. Uh promotion intensive supervision officer case manager community fractures, uh Bane that. Or data, you know, all up, New Meyer election day worker, and Scott second board, New Meyer election day worker.
Okay, I will make motion until early to refresh the fire reaction forms as presented.
Also, I think you can do the second, the question will be actually come on there.
Um you are happy, my fault, we know, that's your full time position, so. Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I said forever, yeah.
Second, removing second, you include uh payroll and can I say all the baby.
And another questions?
My, that's not the one too. That was saying, I know I have those too. Our second, moving expected to brief the minutes as productive, you know, overnight meeting, all favor.
Hello, tiny agenda, so commissioner.
That's just the way that it happens.
Are we gonna have time for all those people to have to come to the law?
Yeah, I, so, but it was one small part maybe, it's a man, last one's at eleven, very fun. How much time do you guys need to get over there?
If your lights and sirens are not very long.
Well, that, that last one, um, last, last one we had really was simple to go ten fifteen minutes, so. Maybe all will be able to make it over there, a bit forward, you want best case, since. There, I think, and we can always try to, um, maybe did that last one, maybe just see if we can do this short as well.
Or maybe you do have some things that you shorten up during the year.
Jacob, get and send me on, we'll see if you guys can do the dust anything if you can, if you can, you can. And for next week's press conference, commissioners. Okay, next commissioner, nine o'clock, you know, there are people, come on, director, hey, young.
Morgan, good yourself.
Okay, you got a few minutes there.
But, it'd be in this uh, I should all in this office. Uh, they, they, we choose one size, I think. One look at the other, they're thinking with the university, you know, who's not such that, new people, yeah, so, you and I exciting contracts.
Yeah. Yeah, but now, and the thing is, it's about half, about half a month. It was way too fast.
Which is obviously mom, but what the heck, you know, this is the same thing, when you see my signature.
So Jacob, we got initiated this past week, he won his first football score. Hey, Lado.
So that's awesome.
He's on the map.
Long as I'm there.
Uh, everyone has the least one, happens to call you, you know.
Anyway, that is, you know.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think I got, I think I got my Bluetooth issues figured out.
Got this weekend off and then the big game. Did you do better the second half of the last game?
Oh, I did, I did it. That's great, now we got our number one receiver back.
Yeah, I saw that.
We're gonna make a lot of people unhappy. It's gonna be the rest all for everything.
It's gonna be the what?
The refs fault for everything.
Both of you were right.
Be, killing the game now. They're loving it, yeah, they should have hit them off the overpin. I don't think I've never seen a team take, now you know, only four classics, an entire game, and they're looking on it for you to play, they do quiet. I've never seen a team take a loss of that few. I mean, their players are just.
They're, they're at the C P N.
Yeah, well, one of them, they're, they're, I saw the scuffle, the shooting match. There was that and there was another one that. Idea about the Kansas City refs and all that, just and doing stuff exactly like what it looks very interesting, it's like. Yeah, that's true, but I have. We're being only able to, yeah. Almost, um.
Oh, my watch is fast, I'll just sit.
Uh, it's just, uh, I'll make sure you're early. Oh, wow.
Yes, you do, you keep track, I mean, that wife said you watch for it. No, I said, I just haven't figured out how to do it right.
Want to name it? Saw a post on Facebook, someone had a picture saying, you see this car where it's a down, it's pretty flat, like.
Lagoon.
Personal tag in the back, it's a fist. Yeah, it's about me, I don't talk, I didn't, I didn't respond.
Yeah, they were making fun of me over there, what did that work, and now I got my, uh, I got my white van back and now I'm getting more jokes, you know, free puppies, free candy, mint tape on the side of it. I don't know what it is.
I like the car.
Thank you.
That's gold, that's gold.
You wanna buy? Yeah, it's a fun castle.
It's gold, you can hold on to that, and not many of them cruise like that.
I know, that she rides over, we're getting recorded, right?
Yeah.
Let's just say she rides over the roads pretty nicely.
What year is it?
Seventy three.
That's true, isn't my high school that thing?
Put my leather coat on, my blue jeans on.
Cool car.
Yeah, she's.
How long you had us?
Only about three or four months, three months.
Any myself already?
No, I would, I could flip it for a penny. I'll do it.
I don't think you can say it on the prize.
Exactly.
You can hold on to that.
But it's money, yes.
It does, it does. She's got.
Yeah, I'm ready.
It does.
Hey, all right. Good morning, County Commission. Uh, Brian Pete with the Raleigh County Police Department. I'm gonna go over a few things today, uh, relatively, uh, general topics, if you will. But for our monthly report for September, our Part One crimes were thirty percent below the five-year average. Uh, compared to September of last year, there's a thirty-four percent decrease. Keeping in mind, we're talking about November, not this month of October. Uh, for violent crimes, we were twenty-five percent above the five-year average. There were sixteen aggravated assaults. Two rapes, no robberies, no homicides reported during this month. Uh, and there's no connections in the aggravated assaults that we can determine at this time. Uh, for robberies, there were none for the month of September. For aggravated assaults and batteries, there were nine aggravated assaults, uh, I'm sorry, aggravated batteries, seven aggravated assaults. During the month, this is seventy-seven percent above the five-year average. One incident was an aggravated assault and aggravated battery simultaneously. As of the eighth of this month, there was an arrest of four of sixteen, uh, of those sixteen incidences. And again, we don't see a discernible trend or connection with these. It's just in our situations that have just been happening. Part One property crimes, we were thirty-eight percent below the five-year average. For this mar, for the month of September, we had nine burglaries, six larcenies from motor vehicles, five auto thefts, zero arson. Uh, the rest were larcenies, uh, forty-six incidences. For structural burglaries, we were seventeen percent below the five-year average. Two of the burglaries were domestic related. We haven't had any arrests on those at this moment. For vehicle burglaries, there we were eighty-eight percent below the five-year average. Uh, this is a low. This is most likely due to, uh, recent outreach that the department has done in the community. Uh, to identify suspects, um, and we've had a spree and we believe we have the individuals, the two suspects. In custody that were responsible for the pattern of, of the majority of things. So. We really want to thank the community because it takes more than just law enforcement to keep, uh, our, our city and our county safe. It takes all of us to do so. Um. So motor vehicle thefts, uh, we had a seventy percent decrease. Um, one of the vehicle thefts was determined to be a civil matter. Five of the remaining six vehicles were recovered that were stolen. Uh, for DUIs, we were forty percent below the five-year average. Traffic accidents, we were nine percent above the five-year average. Uh, these accidents have slowly increased since June. Uh, based on our trends and historical data, we likely see this pattern either kind of shelving off to where it is. Or going a little, a little bit higher by the end of this year. For preventable traffic accidents, we were four percent below the five-year average. And one of the other things that we began tracking were mental health related calls for service. So, um. Before the month of September, we were about fifty-eight percent below the five-year average. Uh, both August and September had the lowest number of mental health related calls, uh, there was, uh, significant calls for service. So. Where, uh, we attribute that again to a very strong, robust working relationship with Pawnee, with all of our stakeholders. Everyone, uh, moving through. And while on the subject of, of crime, uh, there, there are three, uh, cases I want to just briefly highlight. Uh, the first was the, uh, there was, there, there was a DUI charge, uh, especially a fleeting and a looting for law enforcement. Uh, that stemmed out late night, uh, individuals who had almost hit a few of the officers and, uh, we ended up chasing them all the way out to, um. Not Pot County, but the, uh, the next county over. Um, and, and ended up getting both of those individuals into custody. So, uh, there was a DUI related component, if I believe, to that one. Uh, then, of course, we had the issue of, uh, that sprung up on the social media regarding. An individual who was allegedly wearing gloves that were laced with fentanyl and touching, uh, different things and that, that did rather quite. It was disturbing. So the opportunity that it turned out to be not true. Um, but the individual who was involved, folks on social media were identifying him, saying they knew who he was. And that they were going to, uh, pretty much like harass him or beat him up. Uh, again, based on something that was entirely false. And, and this led to another, um. Other different issues with this person trying to cope with, uh, all the things that were being said about him. So I, I wanna take this opportunity to tell people. Don't believe everything you see or hear, especially on social media. Go directly to the people, get facts, and nowadays it's so easy for folks to, to, to try to cast blame. Especially now, the target tends to be a crime and government officials and, and appointed officials. So. Just remember, we're all human, we're all dynamic and, uh, and we're almost always wrong. So don't make those types of assumptions. And then finally, we had that shooting, uh, last weekend that occurred. Out at, uh, on Marlet Avenue, the individual who, uh, uh, suspect for that case is in custody, did turn himself in. So we are again actively working that case and then watching the social media responses that are going back and forth. Um, it's unfortunate would be the words that I would use. Uh, so just folks to just. Live your life. It's the best I can do. Focus on the things that you can control and not the things that you can't, to include other people's opinions. Uh, with that being said, uh, the, our, uh, average daily population for inmates, uh, for this month, I'm sorry, for last month was. One thirty-one point five. Uh, the homelessness working group, the task force. We, uh, for our updates on that is we sent out, uh, surveys to the business community. Uh, as well as, uh, just asking, uh, and, and then we're also working on strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats for the, uh, for the working group. But we sent out a quick survey, seven questions roughly, to the business community, asking them, what if any. Uh, effect has some of this been having on them? And so we're getting, uh, very good data, uh, that will help us moving forward. We will make all that information public. We're working right now on the draft report that we want to provide to the county as well as to the city. Um, on this, so hopefully we'll be done. Um, my hope, my goal is, uh, by the end of next month. And then, uh, with recommendations on what we can do moving forward. Finally, a big, uh, uh, of concern, uh, to the, uh, to the, to the County Commission would be, uh. The M O U contract that we will be entering in with fairly pause. After discussions, uh, communications back and forth with the city, it looks like our focus is going to be. On more operational issues rather than facility related issues. Um. So meaning, uh, what, uh, clearly defined roles that ACOs, uh, in coming over would, um. Like logistics of, this is where the drop off will be. This is, these are the understanding, these agreement, there should be no dollar figures being discussed. And, uh, what we will do is I will be, I'm working in the process now drafting that. Uh, and then we will share internally with our, uh, attorneys. And then we'll also, uh, reach out to, uh, to Jacob and then, uh, moving forward on there because especially. This is, uh, it's, we, we wanna make sure the fiscal, uh, uh, opportunities of this are, are, it's in line with the county's charter. Um, that we, that we're not looking at, um, costs that are gonna be associated with maintenance of the facility and things to that effect. So. Uh, we will be forwarding that information. We'll also forward it to Mr. Gillespie with the, uh, the Law Board's attorney. Uh, outside of that, um, I have no other information to report. Uh, I stand free for any questions you may have with me. Oh, I'm sorry. There are two other things, uh, we are applying for grants. Um, there's the, the grant sequences that are open for the stop, uh, school violence grant. We're working on a grant for that, uh, that also would coincide with the homeless workingness, uh, working group. There's a, a system out there that we can use to communicate and, and quickly identify people who need resources. And all of the community resources that we have, all of our partners can immediately be notified that this person, this family needs these resources. So it would almost act like a dispatch system, if you will. Uh, so we're gonna be putting in for that and then, uh, there'll be other grants that will be moving in for, uh, related to technology upgrades, uh, through the grants that will. We will bring, we will be bringing to the Law Board.
Brian, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I hate so. Actually, I haven't seen him, but I can ask. Yeah, and she said we could have, that you can all agree with her. Which is a cool idea, but then we're still, it's not as we can not. Always gonna see, uh, if I go, if you manage. We were doing, uh, unlike this, so. Or, you know, sadly, as initially, they're performing, they start pretty good, and so just some of that stuff we need to let it all through the last orders. So I'm not sure, but I think maybe it's. You'd like to see that? I hope to, um, because they live in the part where they have, you know, three, not that they have. Which I like, but it was funny here, but it was a lot of, but I'm.
So it's, but I thought it was.
Yeah, they all.
Would.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Amanda Webb, Planning Director, here to talk about the Stoddle Sewer Benefit District. Um, it's been a little bit since we've chatted with you folks about this, but I'm sure you remember about it because we've had a lot of conversations. Um, and the city has been doing a lot of work, uh, towards this. Randy Dewitt is here from the city, um, with us. Um, so just kind of wanted to give an update and then request direction on how you'd like to proceed. Um, so if you remember, there are three parts to the Stoddle Sewer Benefit District, and this is just proposed at this time. This is not. It, it doesn't exist yet. It's essentially, um. So there's parts A and B, and on the screen here, this is what part A looks like. And this is what part B looks like and proposed to look like, and that these are the properties that are included. Um, parts A and B are kind of, you know, they're tied together, so they really kind of go together even though they're called A and B. And then, of course, we have C, um, which we have some information in, you know, what I've given you and what you have before, and I'll talk about that in a second. Um, but C is independent of A and B. So whatever happens with A and B, we can still proceed with C. It's still, it's still going through its procedure. It's a little bit behind what parts A and B are at. Um, again, you have some information in your packet about C, but for the most part, this conversation is about, um, parts A and B. Um, so if you remember, um, we had, this, this started way back, way back in twenty twenty-one. Um, we had a property owner on Stoddle who has two homes on one tract. They've been there a very, very long time, so there, they exist that way. They had wanted to split their property, but under the sanitary code, they don't have enough space to do so and still have private wastewater systems. So they approached us about what to do and then, um, you know, we went to the city and started talking about, well, perhaps there could be a. Benefit district, so then they could split their property. And then throughout that process, there were others that were, um, attached to that. Um, if you look here on property, let's label three. I know it's a little hard to see through the shading here. Um, that is a piece of property that has a current known and, and it's been a while, um, wastewater failure. Um, in order to, uh, manage that, they've been pumping pretty regularly, although at this point, it doesn't seem like anybody is living in the house, so the system's not even getting used. Um, but that's kind of the agreement we made with them while waiting for this, uh, sewer district to potentially come online. They would have to just repeatedly, uh, uh, pump their tank. So then, of course, nothing's really getting into the lateral field. That's where the failure lies. So it's been going fine. Um. So that's really just one thing I wanted to note. The rest of them are just, they, they were just. Uh, a part of it, either because they wanted to split or they were kind of in the area. This is the only one that. Has a known, uh, wastewater situation in parts A and B. Um. Since that time, the original owners, and it's one A and one B, these were the, those were the original folks that came to us wanting to split their property. They're completely different property owners now. That original property owner is gone. It's, it's been new people for the last couple of years. We've talked to you folks about that. They're still in the district because parts A and B were accepted by the city. Um, but then the new owners did not want to give an easement. So that is still where we are. They have not wanted to give an easement, so that's a consideration we need to keep in mind. Um, over the time that, you know, the city really has been looking at all of this. New, um, bids were done this year, just, uh, this summer. Over the time that, you know, the city really has been looking at all of this, new bids were done this year, just this summer, as was required. Um, since it's been several years since the original estimates were done. And what you have, excuse me, what I handed out is what Randy provided. In terms of what the original estimates were from a few years back. And what they are now. As you can see, and, and while we have all three parts on there, we're, we're still for now going to focus on A and B. And what you can see there is that they've gone up pretty considerably, really roughly double in a lot of situations. So. We have a situation where the bids have gone up or the, the estimate for the project has gone up considerably. We have an issue with the original property or the, the original property that started all of this. Let's you that, um, those property owners don't want to. Grant an easement, which we would need. So we wanted to bring this conversation back to you folks to see how you'd like to proceed. The other thing to note. The other thing to note is because the costs have gone up so significantly, or because really because they differed at all from, um, the original bids. We need to recirculate petitions. So that could mean when we recirculate, that could mean all property owners sign, no property owners sign, we could get. You know, and it's that situation where we don't need a hundred percent. But we need enough in order to, if you folks in the city compel that district to be created, again, à la Keats. So really, we want to have this conversation with you folks because this new information has come to light. So we would like some input and direction from you. Would you like to proceed with this? Then again, understanding that the costs have gone up, we're going to have an issue with at least one of the easements. And we need to recirculate petitions. So would you folks like to keep moving forward or not essentially? Do you want to have any?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Commissioners. Randy Dewitt. I'm the interim director of utilities. Maybe just to add a little bit to the backstory of why this has taken so long. As, as Amanda mentioned. You know, originally, the, the project was designed with part A to be on this track, tract one. Again, like she said, those owners originally signed off as a yes to the project through the petitions. So all those petitions were signed and approved for parts A and B. When it came time to coming to get easements. Kind of had a change of heart. Now, that is, that is, uh, been several years ago. I really wasn't involved with the easement acquisition. We had a staff member at that time that had been. Uh, and they, they basically outright refused to even consider an easement. Uh, and it kind of took that as an opportunity for them to, uh, for all intents and purposes. You know, back out of the project without, you know. And knowing that they'd already signed a yes to the petition of the project. So we entered into a process to redesign the project to move it over on. The part A portion to prop, to property two. And so when we did that, you know, we, last time we came to you, we kind of had an understanding that. The project costs are going to increase. More than likely, they were going to exceed the original petitions amount, and that we were going to have to recirculate them. At that time, I think the assumption was that we still would have a no vote for, uh, property one. But the other properties would still likely want to participate. My strategy to get the project to move forward in order to ascertain what those revised costs could be. Instead of relying solely on an engineer's estimate, knowing that we had to move forward with something for part C as well, we decided to just go out and get actual bids for the project. You get actual bids, you know what those costs are going to be. And so we know what those petition amounts are going to be. As Amanda said, those costs came back substantially higher. Now, that's a product of the time that's elapsed. And also, uh, it was conveyed to us from the contractor, the low bid contractor, that they just saw a lot of challenges. With the project as designed, without being able to obtain an easement on property one. Uh, near one B. Uh, there's a large tree that has to come down. There's fencing. The depth of the sewer is just, you know, we've, we've provided quite a bit of permanent and temporary construction easement. On, on property two. They just did not feel that that was sufficient in order to do the project in a cost-effective way. If we did have easement on property one, they said it would probably reduce the cost, but not to a point where we wouldn't see substantial savings. Because they just, they, they listed that as one of the factors. So. Yeah. My experience with these types of projects and my assumption is that when I take these petitions, if, if I recirculate these petitions based on the cost of having essentially, essentially doubled. I'm probably not going to get any yeses. This project was not well received initially. When we first brought it to all these, all these owners. It took a lot of work on county staff and city staff to convince them to make, to make it palatable for them. We, we even have taken on a city share, a city at large share for a portion of part B for this property. Um, so there was a lot of give and take there. So it wasn't easy just to get those yes votes. So. Now, I admit, I am making an assumption that, that, that we're going to get a lot of no votes. I've gone back and forth about just the necessity to even take this back to the, to the owners to, to get a straw poll, yes or no. Um, so my, my conversations with Amanda and other county staff have been. Do we really need to pursue this? And, and this was kind of close home to me because this is, this property owner is a city employee. And they, they have a need for, for this project, but I just, you know. It seems to be kind of cost prohibitive. So last time we met, we kind of had an understanding that there might be a no vote for one of these property owners. And I think we got a, got a consensus from the county commissioners that. If that were the case, there would be a general consensus, consensus that we'd be willing to look at forcing. That benefit district for public health and welfare because we know we have septic system issues. We know we have a property here that would like to develop that wouldn't be allowed to have a septic system. And so. With the, with the potential to have no yes votes. That would then come, require us to go back and force this for health and welfare. And I think there's a big difference between forcing one, one property owner to participate versus forcing, uh, up to five or four or five. So, uh, again, the process here is because, uh, this is a city benefit district in the county. Only when there's a hundred percent yes votes can it bypass the county commission. If there are any no votes, my understanding is that it has to go through both governing bodies to be approved. So that's where we're at now. And just getting some feedback from. This governing body first before I would entertain taking it to, to the city governing body. Uh, I just don't get the sense that there would be an appetite to force it if, if there really aren't, you know. Mandatory issues with septic systems here. I will say with, with property two, they have a functioning septic system. They actually have two structures on the property, but one of them is no longer a residence. I guess it's my understanding, it's disconnected from the septic system. But they do have a grinder pump that, that, that is failing, so they would love to be able to get rid of that and have a, have a gravity flow to the public main. You know, this property does have a failing system, but I think, you know. The, the county regulations typically would require a property to connect if they're within a certain distance to the city's public sewer. Uh, unless there were. You know, specific reasons, it was economically, uh, and, uh, you know, couldn't do it. Um, and so I think, you know, there's, there's ways that we could potentially get around it because they obviously have a much larger property. So. You know, I have an option here at this point to just. You know. Put the project to rest. I don't like that idea because the city has invested, uh, about forty thousand dollars of our own funds for preliminary design and design. You know, all the easements that we acquired were donated. And so we, we asked for donations because obviously if, if we paid those property owners for those easements, they're just going to go back onto the benefit district. So they're just going to end up paying themselves back, paying those fees back through the benefit district. And so the difficulty here is that, you know, we haven't had conversations with this property owner one for a while, just because we know what their stance was. You know, if we had to go through a condemnation process to force that, uh, temporary easement. Again, we're going to have to incur quite a few costs and, you know, from my perspective as a city representative. You know, we would probably look to the county to, to maybe assist with that process. But you know, you're adding costs to the project, both administratively and, and then, you know, I don't think you go through a condemnation process. I don't see that being a donated easement. You're going to have to likely pay for that. It wouldn't be a substantial cost because it's a temporary easement, but it just adds more time and more cost to an already, um, expensive project. So. So that's the, that's maybe a little bit more information from the city's perspective. Just to kind of, I know we're focusing on parts A and E, but, uh, part C, we think is a, it's a palatable cost. We have not circulated petitions for that. Wanted to kind of see, wait and see what the consensus was on parts A and B. If we wanted to look at forcing it. Do a, do an unofficial, um, you know, communication to these folks and engage their willingness to participate. Or if we just cancel the project altogether and then allow county staff to maybe work with property owner to resolve their issues. But I think after this, part C, we will likely start putting together petitions and circulating those. You know, that, that, that. You know, that has changed recently. Obviously, the county has a property that there was a consensus before that it's a, it's, it would participate, uh, with that. And then we have since added. You know, when this was Mid America Piano here, they didn't really have an interest in participating, but since the church has bought that property, they do have an interest in participating. So we'd added them as a petitioners, helped spread those costs out a little bit. So, uh, we have a contractor that has provided bids. They're holding those bids for us. Uh, we, we have a decision to make whether we're going to reject bids or accept, um, bids for part C. Uh, but they also understand that there's a large administrative process that we'll have to go through in order to make that construction project a reality. Uh, because of the lapse of time, you know, I can very well see them asking for a cost change, but there are contingencies built into that estimate that would hopefully allow us to accommodate that. So. I think that's really all I have to add. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah. Midwest.
Yes. Um, so they have. Uh, nothing, nothing that I recall for, uh, an official, like, I mean, they, they don't have legal access to sanitary sewer. That is, they do have two lots. The church is obviously on the north lot, and then there's a second vacant lot to the south. And that lot does have access to this main trunk main. They, I put that on them to maybe do a cost analysis on whether it was cheaper for them to participate in this district. And we would build them a, a lateral connection across Johnson Road that they would then connect to versus them potentially running a longer lateral. I mean, it's, it's several hundred yards to that connection point. I think, I think they costed it out, and it probably would have been less expensive to just participate in this district and make a connection in Johnson Road. So I, but they, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm assuming they have a septic system now. They, they probably have ample room. But it does it also, you know, it's a non-residential. I don't know what county regulations would be on that, but. So.
So property three, which is the one that has the known wastewater failure, they're about two point three acres, so they do have room for. If they're able to get a, like a standard system, maybe an alternative system, they would have room.
And part. Part of this process was, we, we really recognized that while this area really hasn't developed like we thought it would, uh, that, that kind of one seventy seven gateway corridor. Uh, I think zoning was a factor here. I mean, it is zone commercial, I believe, so it is. You know, it is, they have a higher, higher benefit to participate. Um, if it were redeveloped as a commercial property as it's zoned. Which I, I assume there's kind of some commercial, uh, going on there now. I know it's primarily residential, but, you know, they're. They, they, yeah, they, they stand to, you know, maybe benefit from actually putting a, redeveloping as a commercial use. And at that time, they really need to have a, a public sewer connection. So. A lot of the part of the negotiations with them was, yeah, right now, we recognize that it's a residential property. But, and the city took on a, a share of their costs, but if it ever redeveloped, they would have to re, re, uh, recoup the city for that, that share. So that, that was a unique, a unique property that we had to deal with.
They just kind of did it. That.
Yes.
Yeah. I believe, I, I believe almost all these buildings. Is, I'm not, I don't know. I know the owner. I thought all of them had some type of plumbing connection at some point. You know, I don't know. I think they, they might rent some of those spaces out for storage. At least in the past, they have. I mean, it's a. Right now, I think it's primarily a residential property with rental properties. I think that the, the LLC that owns it, I mean, they own several properties very similar to that.
They're all those also. Rental property.
I would.
There mostly is other issues going on there. But everything we're, we're aware of or have been aware of, really, it's the wastewater system that's the issue there. But yeah, everything else they've been doing, they've been doing. They had a house there. We're not sure if the house is now vacant. And then we have kind of the light commercial there. And again, it is a commercially zoned property, so.
I would, I wouldn't say what it's being used for isn't substantially different than a lot of the other properties adjacent to it. I mean, you, you can see just from aerial imagery and driving by, there's a lot of the properties are in very similar. Similar, um, status and use. A hunchpodge of things. But, I mean, from my perspective, the, the feedback I would like is, is, you know, conversations with county staff have kind of come to the consensus that. We probably shouldn't proceed with parts A and B. It's not feasible. In the back of my mind, just because of all the work we've put into it, it's like, do we take one last ditch effort to just send out a notification? Here's what we estimate the costs are going to be. Just be foot, open and honest. It's, it's doubled. Do you still want to participate? If we get a bunch of no's, I think we have the direction and I, I mean, I don't get a sense that any of the governing bodies would want to force. I, I don't know if it's that big of a health and welfare issue that we need to force it now. In the future. Who knows? The good thing is we'll, we'll have plans and we're ready to go in the future if, if we need to do something. And of course, I mean, if we're all honest, I mean, the, the hope is that this is an area that would, you know, someday redevelop and, you know, beautify and. Just haven't, haven't come to fruition or realized what we thought it would do. Uh, when we built this trunk main, which was, was before my time with the city, but I mean, I think that's what one of the bigger intents was to help. Foster this area to be ready to redevelop as a quarter. And I, I don't think we've, have you, have we explored any type of grant funding for this area? I think we've looked at it across the street. I don't think it's an option here to, to get any type of USD fund. I don't think it qualifies. Like, like the Fairmont Height project that we worked on. I know that counties work with city staff to look at properties on the east side of one seventy seven. It just didn't meet the criteria. So I don't think there's any opportunities to. Uh, to have assistance to help, you know, defer some of these costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But like I said, he wanted to sense that I'm not saying here's what it is. Still underestimating.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah. So we've been, we've been back and forth. I always, I have personally on that. It's more, more time. Yeah. Okay.
They send you the water and, and this is the cost of, you know, spending. Your time.
Yeah.
Yes. You enjoy.
Well, if I get shocked and amazed and we do get more support, then maybe we'll have to come back and talk about potentially, uh, doing more to, to get an easement where. A property doesn't really want to participate. Maybe we can find a way to incentivize them to participate, but. All I have. Yeah, if. Yeah, well, so right now that. That sewer, this is an old. Yeah, well, so right now that, that sewer, this is an older image. Like I mentioned, we redot, redesigned this sewer to be fully on. Uh, lot two. And so it would be within a permanent sanitary sewer or utility easement. That has been obtained. Um, it would be good to have a, a, a companion permanent easement on that property. Uh, but for construction purposes, to make it a more viable construction project. Um, we will need to have some type of temporary, well, we've been advised from the contractor that they would prefer to have. Something on that property for a temporary easement, which we, I mean, we all understand those are much, much more affordable. When you don't have a willing partner, um, you know, we all know what that's like and. So we obviously have means to take care of, but those, those are costs sometimes.
Be, they had separate systems.
And it's been there since a very, very long time. So we have allowed to remain as it is. And so again, if either, if it fails or if either of the homes become. Like they're not used for the twelve plus months, that are not performing, then they would need to, or like because if, when they came in and said we want to split. That also triggered, well, we can't bring it as is because they're wanting to make a change. So if it's just left exactly as it is, it's fine. We're getting that way.
Yeah, and, and like, like a lot of owners that are on these septic systems, they feel like, well, it's been here for decades. We've had no issues. Well. You, then you've been successful for a long time, but these are, I mean, it's a ticking time bomb. We all know. We, we face that a lot with the Fairmont Heights project. It's, are my systems just fine? Well, then you've been pretty lucky. It's only a matter of time. I appreciate the time. And if there's anything else you have questions, just let us know. Yes, so it's, it's. Uh, yeah, we did get bids. Like I said, they were, um, they were a little higher than we originally estimated, but they're. The, the information that you have does have as bid summaries of, of what we estimate the. The total assessment would be based on as bid after we factored in all of our. Uh, benefit district costs and fees and our financing costs. And so, uh, that, that would be tracks six through. Uh, six through nine on the as bid summary. As you go off to the right, you can see that what the, the total assessment would be. Uh, well, I haven't provided how many shares there are, but just for example, for that Riley County property at three hundred Johnson Road. That, that eight thousand seven hundred dollars and change would be the cost of one, one share in the benefit district. If that were prorated over an annual cost based off of financing, you'd, it would end up with a six hundred and forty one dollar. Estimated annual assessment. And so that's, that's what the, the church would assess because they only had one, one share. But the MOD properties, there's multiple MOD properties. I think they have a total of eight shares between the two. Seven or eight, or so I think it's eight. And obviously their annual assessment would be almost twenty six hundred dollars per property, so. So that, that's, um, to me, that's, uh, very close to where we thought it was going to be. So I, I think it's a. A ballot, uh, and, and viable project. So I, I would think if I circulated those petitions, we would probably. Get those accepted. And if, for instance, if, if the, uh. If the MOD properties here. Which are the, which I think these are the other properties that the county has had, um. You know, enforcement on where they have special requirements. They've, they've got a combination of a residential and a commercial tied on the same property. There's, there's some requirements also that they have to pump out a septic system. There used to be, I'm pretty sure there still are. And even if they came back and said, no, it's too costly for us, we don't want to participate. We probably, you know, we'd at that point come back and say, okay, we've got. Um, we got four yes votes and four no votes because this property didn't want to participate. At that point, I think, because it does have a, a existing issue. We'd come back and say, and request, would you like to force that district? And I think because of the, that, that would probably qualify for, you know, a health and welfare issue that. You know, the gov, both of the governing bodies could probably support in forcing that district. As long as the county would still want to participate in their chair. So if that's a, if that's a general direction, so we'll, we'll proceed with getting those petitions and resolutions drafted. Send them out, uh, for, for the petitioners to review, get signatures and then. If there's all yeses, I guess we, well, we would have to come back to the county, everybody, just to. You, you would have to, you know, say yes to, to, to your, your portion, your petition, so.
Good morning, Commissioners Jake Benson, Riley County Councilor. Um. Namely, there's just two topics I really want to touch on for you folks and, uh, I've been in contact with. Uh, our lobbyists, Tom Bruno and Dick Carter. Um, and just kind of giving an update as you might have heard some rumblings about a special session. Being called for the Kansas Legislature. So they've kind of given their opinion on where things lie with that and. Uh, there's really two topics within that that are of importance, at least right now. And that of course is the redistricting issue. Uh, and then there's the, uh, twenty twenty three Women's Bill of Rights Law. Uh, this is the law that essentially, um, there's been a lot of litigation regarding, and it's about gender markers on state IDs. Uh, it's gone through multiple, uh, layers of courts. Kind of, I think recently it was just, uh. Appealed. And I think they got, yeah, Kansas Supreme Court declined to hear it. So that is pretty much dead. So if, if. The legislature wants to continue to try to work that law to where they, where they wanted it to be. They're going to have to have that special session right now. Um, right now, there's not any clear indication on whether there's consensus to actually have that. Special session that they're trying to find that out as we speak. Um, so that's namely what's going on. They, they brought up a couple other, um. Points about, uh, at least as far as state revenue goes, things seem to be at least. Uh, on budget, uh, and expectation for the state, although the, apparently there is potentially some. Concern with corporate income taxes. Um, so that, they're definitely keeping kind of an eye on that. And, uh, other than that, there's not really too much else to update, I guess, really on, on the legislative. Uh, side of things. Is there anything? As far as you guys have any questions, uh, for, or concerns maybe that you want me to take a look at? Yeah, well, that's kind of the, the interesting thing is like, ideally, they're only, they are restricted, but there's ways. You know, they, you can start shoehorning some stuff in there and they, and. They'll find a way. Yeah. So, uh, that's, that's all I have on the legislative side of things. I did also want to mention real quick, as I know you guys have been asking. Um, often about that civic use RFP. Um, I have finally gotten that back, uh, with revisions from, um, our folks over in Fisher Patterson. And so we're at a point where we're, we're ready to kind of get the ball moving on that. The only thing at this point is really what we want, uh, the scheduling to look like as far as dates go. And how you want that to flow. Um, we'll come back, we can either. Make suggestions on what that looks like to you guys, or we could just bring it to you and you guys can figure out what, what you want to go. Um. But that's on the horizon here and I finally got it. I'm going to spend a lot of time on Monday. Reviewing the whole thing and just making sure we're, we're all on the safe page. So, um, uh, that is it for me. If you have any questions, happy to answer. Otherwise, I'll hand it over to Diane.
Good morning, Commissioner, uh, Kaylin Speth, WIC Supervisor.
Diane Creek, Health Director.
So just coming to present, um, what we know so far from last Thursday. So, um. Last Thursday, we had talked about the state has provided funding for us, um, administratively. For ten to eleven calendar days, so that has now since expired. Um, and last Thursday, you had approved us using, um, health department admin or health department general funds and workforce development funds. To carry staff through the end of October when, uh, food benefits are expected to, to be depleted. So after I left Thursday here, we received a notice from KDHU that they received additional funds. Um, so we do not know how much will actually be given to us. We had to fill out a needs assessment survey that was completed Friday. And we are still just waiting on our notice on how much we'll, we'll get. Um. Mon, Monday or two, no, it was Tuesday. Um, Diane and I were on a National WIC Association meeting that they were talking about the, the shutdown. And, and what they're seeing at the USDA, um, and FNS. And so in the, in the news, there'd been, um, the notice about using tariff money, uh, for WIC. Um, and so they, they explained that that is section thirty two of the Farm Bill, the Customs Receipts. And that's about three hundred million dollars, which is enough for about two weeks worth of federal program funding. So states are still waiting on getting that money. Um, and that's, that's kind of where we're at. Yeah. Correct. Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah, as we stand right now, October thirty first is still kind of our. End date because that's when the food ends and that's also, you know, when we've decided that. You know, salaries and, and support that way will end unless something else happens. But I think. I think once this other funding comes down, we'll be able to extend. The key is for them to extend the food part of it. So. So, but Kaylin is working also on a plan just in case, um, that all goes away. Um, you know, just prioritizing people to be able to provide formula for people and things like that. So. Um, we'll probably present that more towards the end of the month unless things suddenly change. So, yeah. Which I hope we don't have to present that. That would be awesome. It'll just be an exercise. That's about it. You guys have any questions?
Well, hopefully we'll know more on Monday when we're back.
Yeah, we'll come back every Monday and Thursday still. With probably the same kind of an update.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
Second, and moving second is recesses board health and the subbeans, the board of the commission, so. Down, uh, my girl, leave her head.
What do you call the security guards after Samsung store?
Okay, listen.
Samsung guards, guardians in the alley.
Uh, my, my tend to be all used for a pillow and a joke. Rich, I was so confused during our meeting yesterday, we talked about hearing the noise from the windows outside your office. I was like, how loud are those? If you can hear those from the south theater, whatever. I didn't realize that yet. You had that room up there. So I was, uh, it made a lot more sense now in context.
They have to really love your folks' office inside here.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I thought you were here for the clerk's office. I'm like, how bad is this?
Yeah, the last two road.
Say, what side? They were on it already yesterday, and then completely out some dirt in the house.
That would be ended yesterday, bumping around, see. How bright it is. Well, they got trimmed this class that I. Well, always. Let it seem to none of them. That was, I felt that, I hope it was the paths and flats. No, not all trimmed. There's the guy that won't work with it saying that was a lot of catching, but it's, you know, none of those windows the same size, and you have men of a square, it's an airpiece had to be best and best.
Yeah. Yeah.
Some of them.
Yeah, I mean, you may go back and do a few of them again.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Well, first and foremost, I wanted to wish you all a Happy New Year. October is the start of the four H year. So this month, I thought I would just give a little update on our four H program. What's going on to kick off the new four H year? First and foremost, I'm glad to say the numbers are holding steady in Riley County. This last year, we had three hundred and forty-six four H members enrolled, which varies up and down a little every year, but overall, long-term average over the last five years or so, it's holding steady. As a former four H agent, I'm really glad to see that because there's so much competition for times for kids' time these days between sports and other things going on. So I'm really proud that the numbers are on steady and the fact that we have three hundred and fifty kids almost in the program, that's that's significant statewide. And just for interest sake, in our community or in our county, top programs are Food and Nutrition with a hundred and eighty-five youth, Visual Arts with a hundred and sixty-six, Photography with a hundred and sixty-three, Building Blocks Engineering, the Legos type of thing, the building, the engineering like that with a hundred and twenty-one kids, and Sewing and Textile Design with eighty-five youth involved. So I can pretty much say most of the four H program has more skills in these areas than I do, for sure. But with that, the second thing I want to touch base on is that there's a new opportunity in Riley County that's coming out with John Jobe and some four H volunteers, and that is LIT or Lit. This is a program that's helping being designed by the four H youth, and they helped came up the name, the Lit, but it's leadership and training, and it's actually a pilot program statewide. There's there's no other programs like it. We are the first one to have it. And what the basis of this is, is there's a lot of programs in four H for the young youth, the grade school kids, that kind of age group. And then you kind of get kind of some quiet years of middle school, and then you get to the age group for high schoolers, and there's a lot to do again, a lot of camps go to, a lot of events. But it's been kind of a known problem that the middle-aged group, the middle school kids are missing out on experiences. And quite frankly, I remember this from when I was a four H agent, that it was just almost like a dead year of age group when kids fall off because there's not a lot for them to do. So to help address this in Riley County, I said, John Jobe and so and some extension volunteers have come up with this Lit program. And what it is, is for middle school youth to have like their own leadership program that's dedicated for that age group. There's going to be about six sessions, including overnight trips. They're going to be focused on community engagement, professional growth, communication skills, and leadership adventure. So over this next year, they have, I think, it's about fifteen youth signed up now, a few more come in every week, it seems like, are going to be going off on these field trips, engagement trips, and even overnight trips over the next year to have their own leadership experience built for middle school youth. So like I said, I'm really excited about this for the kids. And John, since this, there's nothing else like it in the state, and quite frankly, I think this could be something that could be used statewide to address that lost middle age of four Hers. And finally, our biannual event, one of my favorite things to talk about, is the is the four H garage sale is going on right now. Drop off is from today, ten to eight P M. Today with shopping from ninety-eight P M. Tomorrow and nine to twelve on Saturday. So anyone looking for Christmas gifts, come by and see us, or gifts for your fellow commissioners, come by and see us. Rumor has, there's already been a voodoo doll dropped off and extension ladders and saws. So if you want it, we got it. And so we have fun with this, but in all seriousness, this is a huge fundraiser for what's been the Citizenship Washington Focus. And what's fascinating, the CDF trip has actually been something that's a nationwide experience for years. This has been going on for decades. However, this was the last year for the official nationwide CWF experience, and our four H has got to be part of it. National Four H Council is actually no longer doing it, they're pivoting to something else. So why are we having this fundraiser? It was seen and talked about between the three participating counties, Riley, Potawatomi, and Wabunsee, that this experience is too great to let die. So going forward, John, Bernadette, Amber, their area agents have had enough experience doing this that they're going to do their own CWBA, CWF experience. So they're still going to be raising this money, designing the trip on themselves, working with the groups, to still go out to DC and have the experience, see the sights. It's one of the things where our youth are too bummed to hear that wasn't happening, so we're going to make it happen ourself, and we're going to make it happen the, you know, the way that we've seen it work over the years. So so that's the good news. If you've heard that experience is closing, it might be nationwide, but we're not going to let it die, we're going to keep it going. And on your on your tables there is a little C, uh, four H swag to celebrate the start of the new year. So if you have like any other sticker needs, I love to giving out stickers, but you guys truly are the supporters here in the county, and we appreciate your help to make this program possible. Any questions and things I can answer, or I'm going out to the garage sale after this, say hi, so I can drop things off if you have things you're looking for on your way back? But. All right. All donated items, whatever. And honestly, the biggest thing is people that are moving, a lot of times, well, Commissioner McKinley, that's our big thing every year, is people are moving homes, will save up and bring us the things that are moving. And I I used to do it when I was, I mean, this, I don't know how many years garage sales has been going on, but we still get great things that are donated. So people come in and truly get things that are used, not just, you know, broken things. I mean, these are things that are great, going to great homes and able to get used. So, uh, yeah, it's all free will donation, and I'm always surprised how well the support's continued for it because there's, but evidently, people still have things to get rid of in their house. So. Uh, nine to eight P M. Tonight, they started yesterday, so there's already a lot of stuff there, and eight P M. Tonight, and then the sale will start at, what is it, nine A M. Tomorrow? Honest to goodness, it's like Black Friday. There are people that line up, and there'll be a line of people waiting to get in. So not saying you want to be the first one there, but things go, there's stuff there the whole weekend, but things go fast on Friday. So. Wow. Uh, thank you for your time.
Yeah, I mean, don't ruin the city of me, guys. Thank you. I read today, I'm very young. And wow, that's so funny with that. How's his day, we're going to my parade, so, uh, oh, yeah. Anyway, it's not such a big deal, but all come. He is sorry. Do you see? They thought that once the people, you will pay that fee. I hope that's against. No, you have all that. We're next, clearly. That's. Either functionally, well, that's. That would be. Now, here's another. Yeah, that's.
Right. Yeah.
They don't with fifteen.
You can read it, you can read it. You know. But I still say, you're a shallow. She's good. Yeah. So. Yeah. You know, it's. What's that? Please, I can try to be back for a fresh. What would be? You know, that's. Sorry. But. What do you? Eight of them, wow. No, two, though. We're built for. Yeah, I mean, I. Sounds like that. I just want to. I kind of stayed until the end, so I threw myself. I probably decided. There was an entire line of cones, right beside me. Well, when we left, oh, yeah. No, they were all there. They said, and I, just like all of them, I said, you'd be a park so far back because there's no parking.
There was. Yeah. I thought I was. It seems like.
No, I just was like, okay, I can walk and get more. Yeah. Yeah, many of us did that. Yeah. Yeah, looked like it was small. And then many of us caution you, like.
The IRVs. Yeah. What's the, what's our question?
Oh, I'll. Um, well, we need to work, and there's a chance we should, the break. You know, for us, there's a lot of confusion, and our division, sales taxes, and what's all. So.
But we don't have any. What do you think?
No, I completely understand that, but there's just a lot.
There's a lot. I'd say it's. It's a lot of. That's right. I didn't know. People said that one of the people. Well, and that's, well, that's the thing with the problem that the I have learned taxes, they're only exempted up to, I think, a maximum of sixty percent policy. Or so they are. And higher than that, it's entirely. And then there's the sales tax, there's two parts to it, here's the problem, so it's sort of like the success. Sales tax. That will be under our policy.
What about cost?
Yeah, remember, I think I had that in the presentation. Materials. Yeah. The, it's just the bar of the corners as sort of the. So, here, there's the. Second, new incentive pieces of commission.
Good morning, Commissioners, Diane Creek, Health Director. I am here to request a maternal and child health nurse position to be refilled. We had a retirement on October tenth, which was last Friday. And so the nurse, the public health nurse will be assigned to the maternal and child health program to provide home visitation services and to ensure that the MCH program's ability to meet both local health priorities and the performance measures required by the state and federal funding sources. The nurse provides direct client services, including prenatal and postpartum assessments, developmental screenings, home visits, health education, childbirth classes, care coordination, and referrals to community resources. The activities are essential to improving maternal and child health outcomes and addressing health disparities within our community. Many of the services are tied to specific grant-funded deliverables outlined in our aid to local agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Failure to maintain staffing in this position could jeopardize our ability to meet required staffing and performance metrics, such as outreach targets and visit quotas, and place current and future funding at risk. The fiscal impact, funding for the position is supported through KDHE-approved fiscal year twenty-six aid to local MCH grant, along with matched funds from Riley County as approved by the commissioners, by you, in March of twenty twenty-five. There's no negative impact on the budget as it's it's a replacement for an already approved and funded position. So I would recommend to move to approve the request to fill the public health nurse MCH position for Riley County Health Department Maternal and Child Health Program. Do you have any questions or concerns? Okay.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay, so, but to the first request, there was a public health nurse, maternal and child position for a lot of health department.
Our second. You can say that if we request. So please sign.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Well, let's say I would have some reasons. But now I would think of my prospecting.
Second, we can say these recesses without even being this word, Commissioners. I'll favor the guy.
Aye.
No game this week, Commissioners, Mr. Hamilton, those will be grand prize winners, the last dance, you know. The first initiation of the winner, the. A goal each week.
We now have.
No game this week. No game this week. Just one thing, uh, just all the permission of the pork shop, I'm going to close it at the beginning of Monday.
Yeah, we won't be sorry for you.
I'll wait, I'll push it, that's, oh, it's served yesterday, so. Yeah, 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 great, you wrote there. Oh, yeah, that's, that's, I guess, the, like, uh, I'll wish you more.
I like this job.
Our second, we've decided to reset to, uh, turn the up code sixty between, uh, commission all in favor.